Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the Commissioned Court for December 23rd, 2013. We'll open up with a word of prayer. And please lead us. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to give a symbol for you and to do those things, or that you pass us to do as citizens of the Potter County. As it should be, we will close and keep our minds discerning on the record of our law that we see and discuss issues of importance in this county. And that we will work together, Lord, at times we may be somewhat disrevelated, but all will, Lord, that we be discreet. We ask your questions special upon those that are serving on the field of law, Texas, with this country. First, I line up defenders of our identity, continue to work to protect us and do those things, or that you pass to us. Rest of all, bless him on his families. And this time is a special season. As it should be, we will remember the reason of our season. And we would always, in mind and spirit, the message for all God's goodness and evil.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's one nation under God, in the difficult, religious and justice world.
Well, again, I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. A very happy holiday to you all, New Year, and travel safe before we begin for the New Year. First on the agenda, oh, before I forget, also, there are some goodies up here. We're gonna have an event session tomorrow from now, so when we do, I do a mind-stay, feel free, indulge, and present myself in the Christmas spirit. First on the agenda will be the approval of minutes from the December 9th and December 13th.
I make a motion to be accepted minutes as presented.
Okay, probably a little bit circular to be accepted minutes as presented. Those who favor, show hands. Pass is five zero. We're gonna take one thing of our name out of order. I'd like to go immediately to the number item number seven, which is Saturday Railroad Museum. This is to be reported on the status of the railroad museum and to take any action necessary. Dave?
Mr. Wolford is here. I'll just turn it over to him, so. Well, the first thing I need to do is apologize to you all for not being here two weeks ago. I wish I could tell you that something really important came up. I forgot about it. That's as me a help as I can do.
That was me all time, too.
I acquired the financial records of the museum from our treasurer, Jim Thompson, former vice president of Emerald National Bankman, with us all six and a half years. And then I'm part of those today, Dave Kemp. You all have those. You all have copies.
Thank you for providing those copies to the court dates.
I have one after copy. What we have, the balance sheet, we have $288, 607.46 in the bank. And I have here a copy of the balance sheet, check register, and all of that. If anybody does not have one copy, I have one copy.
The court has a copy.
Did you get a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I furnished you all some time ago with a full detailed report of where we are. And reported to you, I believe, that City Emerald has purchased the property that we wanted so badly, and that is the railroad station and railroad express agency property, vacant property in the southwest corner there on Grant off Sixth Street. Since I talked to you last time, nothing has transpired. Our board will meet in January, and at that time, we will make a decision what has to be done. If the city is in, as it is intransigence, as they seem to be right now, we will not be able to acquire that building. We, if we're going to acquire the railroad station, the railroad express agency station, and the acreage, which is about four acres total, then we're gonna have to have you all step farther, frankly, and encourage the City Emerald and City Commissioners to take us seriously, take the county's project seriously, and talk them into this notion. Here's what we want. We want the railroad station, access to the railway express agency building, and the acreage on the southwest corner. And then, when we get access to those buildings, from the city's viewpoint, then we have to go to Lot Glory and compensate him for his three-year lease. He had, can you believe, he got a year's lease, three-year lease, a dollar a year. And I'll tell you what, that's where he paid, the city paid him $2.6 million for all of that property, from Third Street and Sixth Street, from railroad track to Grant. Commercial lease is 1% per month of investment. Thirty-six months, 36%, $2.6 million is almost $850,000. That's the value of that lease, the three bucks. In addition, whoever takes over railroad station has to spend $1.4 million in making where you can use the building for the public. We have an engineering study which we could furnish to you all in fact, and which we furnished the City Emerald before they signed the final documents. So the city's gonna use it for anything, their total investment is 2.6 plus 1.4, which is four plus the value of 800, it's 4.8 million dollars. It's not 2.6. No, no. It is 5 million dollars. Do I sound a little testy? Well, I hope it doesn't leak out, and they expect that I'm really upset. But I think it's very unfortunate, and we've been cut off in the pockets. We got a letter from the city manager. His view was, it's done, and I have no way in. I have way in my board, I have a power board. I have people you just can't just fluff off. And so if they decide that if we want to pursue, we need your help, my board's got to put a help, and I can call in some chips with past board members, and we have the lobby at City Commission. They need to call up these things. I was talking to the Commissioner Church this morning about the things that Emerald has walked away from during my lifetime, since I've been back from law school in 1996. Once again, are we gonna walk away from this? Is the City Emerald gonna give up one more time? Something that will benefit its citizens, not that they turn it down, it just never hits them. It sails past them. It's like talking to a child in the third grade that has quantum physics. It's not that they can't understand, they just don't take time to understand. So if we're gonna have a museum, what if we have, what if we had 23,000 items up on the second floor?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit on the second floor. It's worth a trip up there just to see history laying around in boxes. And I have four boxes of models. And for that to get away from the people of Emerald where Santa Fe Railroad was absolutely critical to our resistance, to impress us, let that off, it's just crazy. Now that I've made it, y'all have any questions?
I do, Mr. Wolford. I am referencing the financial statements, and forgive me, but they are partial at best. A couple of my questions, it really reflects...
That's all we have.
Which is part of my concern, to be quite honest with you. I do have a couple of questions in terms of from 2006 to 2008, which is completely missing from the document. It would have been heavy contribution years on behalf of the county. But I see some line items in terms of fundraising. In 2008, $65,000, and then it references 2006 to 2008, another $105,000, and another $65,000. And then I'm also referencing some administrative fees that range anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 and $15,000. Can you shed any light on what those expenses were?
The fundraising is, would you hire the Emerald Area Foundation to be your fundraiser? Those are the best fundraisers around. Then you sign a contract to pay them, I'm surprised, I'm surprised for $6,000, $5,000, should be, should be about $700,000 a year, if I recall. If they charge us less, that's fine. The other items, I can't tell the check register, I don't know if that's one, can't tell the group to go and check, but you can. That's all the fundraising went the Emerald Area.
And then the administrative fees that are referenced, and they only stop at 2008, is the only thing I have for documentation, ranging from $4,000, $15,000, $20,000, and another $15,000.
I'm Jim Thompson.
You cannot?
No, I wasn't expecting to do that. I'm happy to get Jim Thompson.
Sure, sure. And then a question I also have, and this is not in what the Commissioners had with their documentation, and Dave Kemp did provide this as a follow-up, I requested the information to prepare for court, is an IRS statement that was filed in 2012 that references an income of $50, and the county alone contributed $50,000 that year. Can you shed any light on that?
I'll take that up, Jim Thompson.
It's all open, I'll let the court certainly before I ask questions to the auditor and legal counsel.
I want you all to remember, you all are not Emerald.
But we are contributors to your accounts.
I understand, but you're not Emerald.
But you have a right to file it.
Actually, you don't.
We'll reference the contract if we need to do that.
I can take note on that, Dave, and see if that's my understanding of what we did.
I'm waiting on the contract. Contract doesn't, I don't know, I haven't looked at the law, and the contract does not say we have a right to audit it. So, and I don't mind being audited.
Sure.
So, if money that wants to come after me, somehow or another, I am up here under some kind of subpoena, and I'm not, I'm up here because I've agreed to come. We're gonna furnish you all the information we have.
So Dave, can you please advise, Dave, can you please advise on what you consider the next legal step on behalf of taxpayer dollars, whether it's in the contract or not, if there's a question on use of funds? I feel that's a concern, and we have a right to raise that.
Well, that Mr. Wolford just said that he would mind an audit, is that correct? I don't mind an audit, we're not gonna fund it. But if you all, if I'm up here on the bench, you have to come run my corporation, my board, we have a chart from the state of Texas, we're not gonna use your banks.
Would you agree, though, Mr. Wolford, that the information, had you been on the opposite side of the court, is partial at best? Could you make an educated decision on what was provided?
I don't know that I have an educated decision to make. Question is, have we spent your money, what?
Question is, do you have the money at all? That's at least my question.
If that's the implication, then we need to get Jim Thompson down here, and also we need to get my board down here. The implication, Commissioner, is that we've done something wrong and illegal with our money? I don't like that.
I do not say that, Mr. Wolford. I'm questioning, I'm questioning the dollar amount on behalf of the taxpayers. We are the business students.
And I don't mind the deal, but if y'all wanna have a lawyer come down and do this, it's fine. And that is just fine, I have no objection. But the idea that I'm on target is not gonna fit.
So who would you consider appropriate to ask the questions of? Maybe you can direct us.
I don't run this court.
But you do run the court, the nonprofit.
That's correct.
And so you would be the first individual that I would think of to contact for questions?
Yes, if you have the right to call me in here and grill me.
So the court has anything to address?
I think that, seeing as I don't want to go out on the road, plenty of boxes about here, however, because it is a legitimate question to ask, and we are the issue responsible for the taxpayer of Potter County, and so someone can open questions that was approached, and you basically indicated that you need to get Thompson and the board to respond to some of the issues and questions we have, and I think that's appropriate, that I would...
I have no objection, we have no objection, we're not trying to add anything. Now, if somebody stole, it's fine, I didn't...
No, and we're not asserting that at all, however, now that the question is on the table, I would suggest, Dave, I would suggest that we take on Mr. Wolford's, see, that we request Mr. Thompson and the board to address the questions to them, if that's in an appropriate manner that we do that, that we can.
I think that's fine. We were just talking, Carrie and I were just talking, and I was kind of asking, you know, and I mean, something like that, I mean, I think putting those folks in touch with our own auditors and have them just kind of look and ask some questions, I think that might answer a lot of the questions. And I think this is a better approach, have somebody who's expert come in and do this. And we will make it all available, but sitting here and air this out in public is really kind of, kind of productive. One, it's strikingly wrong, and here, I've come in here thinking this with my friends, and I've worked for you all for six and a half, working for your project for six and a half years, and I'm treated like I'm a citizen.
And we don't want to assume that that's the case, however, this is the, however, we have not received any type of information report for extended period of time, we're just trying to F and R at this time. If there was a slight, excuse me, move on the left side of the dumpster, then the apologies to the court, to you. However, I think it is worthy as a court that we receive as much information along those lines as we can, so that we can be appropriately representative of the citizens of Potter County.
I don't know how many times I need to say it, you all are welcome to our records. But I think that the easiest and most efficient way is to have somebody from the audit department, get professional people that ought to come down here and do any of the records, sit down with our people, and work it out there, rather than air this thing out in public. If there's a new thing, this is gonna be great, isn't it?
Right.
Well, that's certainly not the intent, Mr. Wolford, just to give you a little historical piece, and my particular tolerance is I've been requesting this information since September, and this is the fourth time it's on the agenda. So I'm not sure how else to ask it, other than, we need the financial information, we've been good stewards, every fiscal year contributing to the vision, there were several on the court, there are new members of the court, and we're not participating in the 2006 contract that was signed. So again, the fiscal stewards for the taxpayer, their questions, this is the forum for those questions to occur, so it's certainly not implying anything about you or your finances, but that's quite honestly what we're here to do.
I think that we are at a particular, I think we are both on the same journey in respect to allowing professionals to move forward with giving any confrontation that is necessary, Mr. Auditors, and dispense with anything that it seems, the perception is, that their accusation being evident, and certainly that's not the case, and I wanna emphasize to the court, that's certainly not the case, when you was, so, let us, Dave, moving forward, what you suggest.
I mean, I think, let's just, I would say, with our auditors in touch with their folks in turn, and I think that ought to be, you know, they can answer questions, and you know, kind of decide where to go.
Does the court, in terms of favor of that?
Carrie, just a follow-up question you had, is that something that you're comfortable taking on, or is a third party required?
Yes, as I was saying, they will be happy to review it, and if we have any questions that we're not comfortable with, we'll come back and ask questions. But I will start with my staff and Mr. Wolford's staff.
Okay, all right, terrific. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Wolford.
Thank you. Now, the question is, assuming that I come out clean, and I think that's gonna happen, I want you all, seriously, to think about getting on board, getting at the city, get them to give us access to those two south buildings and that property, so that we can have a museum here. Otherwise, a lot of people, they've put six and a half years of hard work, and a lot of heart, a lot of money, you all go out of money, a lot of private money, and just like, my PC was just flushed off and blew away, I suppose. And I'm very, very frustrated with the process. And I hope that you all get on board and help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the season.
Okay. We need to check for any, with any time frame.
That's, I, that's up to you guys.
Carrie, you have any thoughts on that? All right, thank you. Item number two, vouchers, considering act upon approval payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office of December 4th through December 17th, 2013. And the amount of, or checks, total check, 15272, 152991, and wire number 312 through 314, and the amount of $2,54825.39. I make a motion to...
Second for discussion?
Mr. Carrie, I have a question about badges that was purchased. Did you have any thoughts on it?
No, sir, I'm sorry, I have not to.
I actually talked to one of them. It actually was two badges for that $95, and the reason for it was his old ones were tarnished, and he had a change of certification, so he wanted that on the badge, so that, that was the reason for that purchase. I told him that maybe he meters it.
Change of certification.
Maybe the credentials?
Yeah, I don't have a badge.
But if it was on the badge, that he put it up there, so.
We have the letters behind them, the credentials.
That's what was indicated to me, and then also his magazine, he went from Lord Carrie on the 45, to he wasn't going to 90, there's some media, it's up the square, he's wearing the square magazine, so that was what the magazine was.
I have one question for the court, page eight, 31, check number 152817, body shop, hill repair, $5,418, Constable Four, so I want to make sure that was covered by insurance? I think that it was, but I just need to confirm that.
What check was that again?
152817, middle of the page, active body shop, $5,418 and $14,000, Constable Four.
Yes, it was, we got an insurance check.
Just for information, Julie, on page 21, 31, was a $15,855 total debt to Patter Technologies.
Yes. That's for our software maintenance fees, apparently. I think that's, I think that's yet that all the fees we pay. Next year.
I have a question on page 11. Portier, upon area outside of, $1,240, what is that for?
Our firm is from Aberdeen, and they say the very odd, the very odd gives us the government rate, the auditors to reimburse that to...
Okay. How many nights is it? Is that like a month?
It's about two weeks, but there are six people.
They don't all stay together.
Not the same.
Any more questions from the court? This is, okay, motion on, to approve the vouchers, I have certain questions presented, open favor, show hands. Okay, passes five zero, okay. Item number three is to recognize insurance report, any...
Yes, I can, send me the one.
So recognized. Item four, to consider an act upon the following, and I assume you're following, you're going to hold your focus.
I'm not sure about that wording. Yeah, and Dave, I did question whether we can actually take action on it, since it's not listed on the agenda, and I did stop by Sharon's office this morning. Normally, it references a quarterly investment report and a monthly treasures report, so I questioned whether we could take action, since it's not listed on the agenda.
I think you're just recognizing, aren't you?
I think we, sort of along the way, I think the wording has got changed.
I think you're just recognizing, I wouldn't worry about it.
I think that's probably true, but I think what I'm referring to is saying the cost of wording on the agenda is certainly an act.
And certainly not trying to make it difficult, but I do want to...
I understand, and technically, Dave is absolutely correct, but since we just recognize it, and taking no action, I would say we'll get...
Yeah, well, great.
I thought we normally took action on it, but I could be wrong.
No, we normally just so recognize.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Okay. First, I'll just report that tax pool has been so volatile in the last couple of months. We've been as low as a little before three, a little below three. This morning, we're at four and seven, so it's, we were still stable, but it's very I currently have a tax pool, because we have begun our tax season, and my bank dollars have begun coming in, and I asked Carrie to give us a little update this morning as well. So in tax pool, I have $11.4 million, and I have a little over $8 billion in Emerald National Bank checking account. So as of Thursday of last week, Emerald National Bank has increased their collateral force to $40 million to get us through this tax season. So every year, we kind of go a little higher, because our taxes have increased, and they've been very good to work with us. It's been very tight this year, I think we've started a little early. I will tell you, before Sherry comes in business with you, that totally, as far as cash available this morning in our general fund is $15,843,141.11. We received $3 million from the tax office last Thursday, and $2.8 million on Friday. I don't have the totals as before I take a court this morning, as Rob came in over this weekend, but Sherry and I are on it, and so if the funds, we'll get them today. Sherry, you want to talk about percentage and where we are?
Good morning. Right now, we're at about 25% of our current collections. We had received a couple of our mortgage companies a little earlier this year, so that's why the man has been scrambling last week. We did anticipate Emerald National and Wells Fargo probably by the end of the year, they may come in this week, and, 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 collections are being...
Sherry, how does that compare to this timeline last year?
I think we're a little bit up, because those mortgage companies, a couple of percentages up, it's in the mortgage tracks. I'll probably make a break this morning, but I get back to the office.
It's just all a guessing game, you're never sure. I mean, at least this year seems to have started a little early, but we're on it, and all this under control.
Very good, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, so considered and still recognized. Item five, considering tax office refund, considering act upon, tax refund, all the payment of taxes.
Again, it's that time here where we've got title companies paying, mortgage companies paying, homeowners paying, sometimes you can, and those are the ones that are upper limit, and, and, dollars.
I make a motion that we authorize the refund.
Make a question, Judge.
You don't have a copy of this? The insurance report? The trade report? I make a motion that we authorize the refund for account number 44-3700-0940.
Could you read the owner's name on this?
Owner's name, as reflected in the documentation.
Second. Okay, move and approve, and you're authorized, and you're fighting on the, uh, do you get that?
Yes.
Those who fight with your hands, they pass it five zero. Item six, to consider the approval of budget limits from the current fiscal year, you know that we've edged out a portion of that tax, which was, uh, type of word, printed in there, and is to consider and act upon the approval of budget limits from the current fiscal year.
This is our demand, and this is our demand, again, it's our carryover of outstanding commitments, and we can go this year, we see the largest portion of our insurance plan... See largest portion of our insurance payments that except.
Sherry, the only question I have is on item three. Looks like there's some funds being transferred. Fifteen hundred dollars. I'm just wondering why it's not coming from the Santa Fe building repair maintenance account. There's a hundred and five thousand budget in that.
It actually needs to come out of the account because they want to just break over.
I just didn't know if there was a particular reason to say it was at the, the Santa Fe building specifically?
I feel more comfortable taking it where we have right now, Commissioner. Our Santa Fe accounts are going to get pretty low pretty soon due to the development project.
Okay.
Any more questions, Ed? I'd like to build ceremony on number two. Two. We have to take action on that later.
Probably wouldn't for Commissioner after the executive session on the day, sir.
Either way, you want to. I just.
Whatever you, whatever you like. Alright. So noted, uh. So do we need to approve number one as well, or no? Yes, okay. I note that the. Approve the, uh, budget amendments for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget. Items number one, number three, and number four.
Second.
Those in favor, most on the board, second, those in favor, show hands. Passes five zero. Item number eight. County transportation infrastructure grant term. To hear a report on requirements of qualifying for a county transportation infrastructure grant and taking the action, Mr. Sir.
We, uh, I, I think, I, I know everybody got communication back about a, a program the state started to. The idea was to provide money to counties to have increased expenses because of increased oil and gas expiration production in there. And so there's a, there's a fund that's set up by the state that provides a little extra money for infrastructure projects. It's a law called, and also a county can apply and qualify to receive some money to, uh, to help fund that project. You have to, it has to be an ancient grant. Um, so the question. Well, based on their formulas, a little over two hundred thousand dollars would be available for Potter County for the right project. And in order to qualify for that grant, you have to go through certain steps. I have to look into the statute. There are a number of questions that we have about it. Uh, and in other words, and main one being that we don't think qualified number one causes the grant itself is for increased oil and gas activity. Quite frankly, we don't have any of that in Potter County. So I'm not so sure that there's an infrastructure project, in other words, roads that we can spend money on, that we would need to spend money on causing track, increased traffic from, from, uh, oil, oil trucks coming in, which, which did kind of the intent of the grant. So I'm not so sure you can qualify it again anyway. The second thing about it is in order to qualify, what you have to do is set up what amounts to very much like the tiers. An area that the county set aside and, uh, it's, it works just like a, it's a reinvestment zone that's specific to this type of project. And so you're setting aside a portion of the county where oil and gas activity is going on. And for a period of time, which can be up to ten years, all the increased revenue taxed from subsequent years goes into that area and it has to be spent for whatever project you want to do. So if you want to improve roads, you can only use increased tax revenue from that area to spend on roads. So, uh, I don't know if you want to do that. Uh, you know, I'm not sure you qualify. Uh, and there's a, there's a very, very short time. I'm not sure why the state has given us such a short period of time. The application process starts in February. And before we do that, you've got to go through these, setting up the, the, the reinvestment zone and qualifying, and which can all be done. But in the end, I don't know that you qualify to grant it. It's not applied to wind currency projects if you're thinking about that. It applies only to oil and gas production. So I, I think our recommendation, I believe auditor's office, uh, and I kind of go look at, at some of the times. There's a lot of good information on the back of the side about it. Our recommendation is that, you know, we just pass, pass that, so we will be qualified.
And I think what sparked the conversation is commissioners received documentation from this legal firm out of Austin, Allison and Bass, if I remember correctly, who sent that to us, indicating there may be funds available. So I, I know I asked and I think Commissioner Church asked as well, so making it forward, because I know it was, uh, some detail of research to bring our recommendation back to the court.
But I thought you might want to know if we see that. That's why I put it on the agenda, uh, just to take this for your information.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Kerry.
Item number nine. Prohibition on outdoor fires. And it's considered act applying totally a ban on outdoor burning in unincorporated areas of hard county for a period not to be denied. Pursuing local, local government code, section three five two dot zero eight one, is anyone? And I guess a question, and I'm maybe more toward the commissioner, as far as, uh, because of the increased margin that we receive, you're like, is there, uh, an area of means that we could, uh, suspend that for a time, if you could do some burning and then?
Well, it's already, uh, yeah, so, well, this was too much as if conditions had gotten worse or had improved. And I, I just think it's something about a table again for another two weeks and taking a look at that.
I did not have a chance to check it out next day. And we're still driving. I think we're still kind of below that threshold of scrutiny. So you might, and, and remember in, in case of, it's suddenly the fire department, there's another procedure in place allows the county judge to impose a fire ban. A hundred and fifty if you need to, so you always have an option in addition to this.
Chris, we probably get some challenges. Randall County did bring in their.
Yeah, they, they, a couple of weeks ago. But anyway.
Alright, item number ten.
We can also pass this. We, uh, I put this on here and we sent to me in the meeting, which gets not sent. Me, Matt, just this Friday, but I think we need additional information. I have to start here just in case we're ready to have some kind of recommendation.
We will have some, very soon, but right now, uh, I think there's an ongoing discussion of giving confirmation from their side now, so. We should have something different. Uh, item ten is the election administration, elections to appoint, there is going ballot board judge and set the number of courses and to appoint the election officials at Central County State and set the rate of pay from March fourth, two thousand and fourteen on primary level.
You guys have a packet there with three things in it. The first thing is the order of consolidating precincts. We are planning to have sixteen voting locations, um, throughout Potter County before the March fourth election day primary. We had to change some of those locations because four of the schools that we normally use will be under construction. And will be requested by ISD to stay away and find alternate sites. So the folks that normally would vote at Bellmar will be moving over to Allison. Uh, as opposed to typically, we also know over to Bellmar. Uh, the people that normally would vote at Bibbins will be at Tascosa. At the dam, we'll be voting at Freedom Baptist Church, which is at nine hundred Alta Vista. And the folks that would normally vote at San Jacinto will be at Amarillo Seventh Day Business Church, which is four oh five southwest run across from Emerald Country Club. Most of the judges have our, have a, all the judges have accepted. We have four holes there on alternate judges. We're just waiting for back from those guys to call to them. So, um, that, that particular group should all be in place.
So you think you have sufficient number of judges, of course, that are out there that are, of course?
Yes, yeah, we'll be all, we're pretty fine. The judges have all said, yes, they're, they're here. The alternate judges, we have four, which is with the holidays. We've had a hard time getting them to say yes for sure.
This is for the primaries?
This is for the primaries and this is for Eliot Day.
We, we can reverse that parties that are there to us?
We, well, we'll see. On the primaries, yes, for most of it. Um, by law, we have to pay for the early voting that's out there and so that, that is on us. But for the most part, we have a contract or even place with them that will cover the expenses. You guys will eat that one.
Any questions, Commissioner? Okay. Okay, second.
Second.
I move in second to approve their ruling about the judge and set the number of courts. The election officials have taken the conversation. Those in favor, show hands.
We're doing all three of this stuff?
Uh, I was gonna say, did you want me to tell you about the early voting ballot board? I always say it can come in two through this, fifteen years. Early voting ballot board, um, well, that's.
Are y'all gonna take these separate hours?
So each one, so. Going on person?
So we approved the consolidated precincts, is that what we did?
Yes. Okay. So I need you to vote on that.
What consolidated precincts, those in favor?
Second is the order of appointing the early voting ballot board judge. And we had to make a change from the last one because our previous early voting ballot board judge was pending in this particular election. So PJ Williams has agreed to be the judge there and he wanted to appoint as many as six clerks to help with that. Uh, they will be paying a dollar to an hour, which is to be part of the party.
I move we approve the, uh, order of appointing their voting ballot board.
Second.
And third is just more, we want to, sorry, we vote.
Uh, party to do. Okay, the motion in second is that, uh, approve the auto appointing literally that voting ballot board, uh, those in favor, go ahead. Take passes five zero, now.
The last is just more information for you guys. The, um, this is the appointment of the, um, the folks that work at Central County. And these, all these names have been approved by both the Republican Chair and the Democrat Chair for Potter County. And this is disclosure of what we pay both the folks that are elections officials at, at Central County as well as our clerks. The parties will reimburse the county for eight dollars per hour. When we are using people who are, are everyday employees, we pay them what they normally would get. And so this was just disclosing that fact to you guys.
That was for any information on?
Yes. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to set a rate of pay as noted in the agenda? We, we took this. Belinda, I'm sorry, do you want, Commissioner Mordio was asking, do you want us to, uh, you want them to vote on this third? Where you're setting the rate of pay for Central County station?
Well, historically, I could not find any more than where we just informed you guys.
Okay.
So there was no such a bottom, so unless you guys.
Does the election board set that rate?
Yeah.
I thought we started raising the price from there and you put it on there.
Uh, the county has set a rate, but it's a calculation. But the primaries, when they're paying it, they have a separate rate and so their rate is eight dollars now. So this one's different.
Belinda, it does, it says in contract, parties doesn't it?
Yes.
And you approved that contract, so.
Yes.
That's one reason.
Item number thirteen. The pot county projects, the jury report on very pot county projects and take any action necessary. Just had a few items to present this morning. Uh, the county court has a physical project, uh, presented to you the last meeting regarding the Texas Historic Commission additional cost. A visit with this maybe on the thirteenth of this month. Finally, came to an agreement that she would recommend to the Texas Historic Commission as a court meeting in January twenty-third. But then they paid additional funds over the bus and certain ones that made the changes. So the project's kind of on hold until we get that response back from the Texas Historic Commission. Our station number three project, uh, we had a first owner architect meeting on the thirteenth. Uh, we discussed the current general, uh, project description, just to kind of get one with the architect. The architect has already provided back this a very brief, uh, drawing of what the area could look like. Uh, we're still waiting on our boundary surveys to come in. I spoke with the surveyors this morning. They have some additional requests that we'll need to confirm, uh, the, for the ones that's familiar with the area that we know right now. Uh, that's up the center of Sanci and Melton. Potter County does not own the property directly beneath the power lines of Sanci, Arlene, Chris, and the properties all of that. Uh, we're trying to, uh, uh, Mr. Furman is currently checking the deed records to verify that nothing has changed on that. So we'll be bringing that information back to the court. Uh, we do have some additional concerns. I, Richard and Pat do will be listed, uh, with Commissioner Bond, Commissioner Kelly. Mike, y'all, where they will come back to the court. I believe Pat's saying it was kind of business with each other, Commissioner, one-on-one regarding some of the concerns we have with this project. We hope you had that, uh, concerns addressed prior to the thirteenth, bring it to the court on the thirteenth of January.
Um, Mike, on the glare project, uh, I visually see that difference. Is that completed?
I just noticed it while I go for the first time. I have not inspected it, but it should be completed.
Okay. And then any update on the area products? I know Nick was working on that.
We, he got everything ordered. Everything's ordered, I believe, waiting on the shipment.
Yeah, I believe it was four to six weeks.
And then the county court at law, the handrail?
Handrail, he is working with that local contractor. He did visit with Judge Gleason, the one that presented the document to y'all. Understand everything is in range, I know that we are.
On the Santa Fe elevator, do you bury?
Uh, we currently right now with this time in our, you know, end of the year. Nick has been working with, uh, Tissacra Elevator Company, uh, Mr. Juan Torres, Texas Department of Ice Regulation and the local contractors, confirming all of your scopes of work. We'll be presenting that two days prior to your next commissioner's court meeting. Uh, knowing everything is okay, we'll present that project to you on the thirteenth.
Yeah, and, and I've already looked at our maintenance contract and I, I was a little concerned about the dollar value and if we were gonna have to go for quotes or formal bids. Um, but the contract we have currently, and I'm mainly discussing this today, says as long as we don't make this contract with them, we won't allow anyone else to come in and work on the elevators because they don't want to be responsible for another company's project. So I, I really think it's gonna be a discretionary exemption from competitive bidding.
And Dave, is there any update on the journey been discussion and the final items that were pending from them?
No, I've sent a letter to the journeyman's council and said, uh, we need to resolve this. We're assuming we have a disagreement about the warranty issue and we don't hear from you within a certain date. You see the letter, we'll assume you don't want to return the mediation. Otherwise, we'll be going, we'll do a technical direction.
When is the date that we gave them to respond?
Uh, fifteen days from receipt of their letter and I do not know.
It would be, I think it was the end of the first week in January, I think. Uh, correctional facility project, uh, last time reported to you, sure, so you have any other, or do you have any other additional information?
Thank you for coming in on your day off, Mike.
Okay. Item fourteen is a jury report. And count is five-three-seven with eighty-six females. All in-house, Sheriff, but no one being transported to children.
We brought everybody back and I have to give credit to the county attorneys on that, which helped us out tremendously. We didn't sleep loud. We had six hundred and two last week. Which are passing six oh threes. Thanks for letting me all do some amount.
Sound like if you need to keep them out, you ought to be able to keep them out.
I offered to go out by sign, but Sam said you don't like it. Told me I couldn't do it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, item sixteen and seventeen, court is going to adjourn for, well.
County insurance office, number fifteen.
Consider act upon any insurance claim, accident, except for against the county.
There are no new accidents. I've just updated you from the county attorney's accident last time. The other insurance company has taken fault for that and they have considered that total. We, we haven't got the amount as of Friday. We haven't, we don't know how much we're going to get back for that car. So we will be coming to, we're the county attorney, so probably there's most of that.
Did we get through the weekend with it?
Yeah.
Sheriff, no, nothing to report? Fair enough.
It was a little rough.
Was that a new vehicle that was in that accident or was it used?
No, it was a weed accident lot. It was a rental in two thousand. Two thousand and seven.
All right, now, item sixteen and also seventeen, designated sessions for real property to hold in designated sessions to liberate persons who maintain the value of real property where deliberation and opening meeting would.